This is the City of Wapaka, third Tuesday of the month, city council meeting.
We have a public hearing first tonight, so we'll start with that and I'll call this public hearing to order. Sandy, you want to take role?
Sure. Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson? Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
Awesome. Thank you Sandy. So, this has to do with the zoning rewrite for the public hearing. So, I'm actually going to just turn it over to Aaron and I think Aaron and Jeff Sanders are both going to explain why we're having this public hearing and then they'll turn it back to me and then we'll take testimony in favor of and against the ordinance amendment. So, go ahead.
Okay, thank you Mayor Smith. Just to set this up a little bit, guys, if you remember back in 2019, Jeff actually through his community planning and consulting business did an audit of our current zoning code at that time, and a bunch of things came up as far as, you know, what was well, what things could be changed for improvement. And as a result of that audit and a lot of public input, our strategic planning process, so on and so forth, we were able to talk about and then get into a contract with Jeff Sanders to redo the zoning code or rewrite the zoning code or Chapter 17 in our ordinance. It's been a little bit of a process. It's been a good process. We've been working through that really since the summer, I'd say June-July time period. Plan Commission has addressed this in about, I would say, six to seven meetings, possibly more than that, a lot of special meetings. And Jeff has kind of gone through section by section by section with them throughout that time period. Throughout that time period, we've also been collecting some public input from different people who are interested in different parts of the code or who had experiences and we try to work that in to the different sections along the way. Without a doubt, it will lead, I mean, that public input and even though we have something in place moving forward, or we hope to have something in place soon moving forward, that's a different code than we had, that public input will continue to come in this year, next year, 10 years down the road. And, you know, that will certainly take a look at things then. But the idea is, is to move through the process of approving a rewritten Chapter 17. As you guys know, we also are going through a comp plan update. So, this would be really the main part of the rewrite. In a couple months, we would come back and look at the zoning map based off of the future land use that would get approved through the comp plan. So, you could kind of view this whole process as step one of two steps to get it completely updated. And I guess I'm not going to get into the entire thing right now. I know Jeff is going to give a summary of it in the bulk of the agenda here when we get into the first reading. He's got a sheet that we'll put up on the page and he'll talk through that. But that's kind of what we're talking tonight. We also have some people that have joined that are willing to give public input here tonight, and I know Mayor will kind of take us through that. I can say, Mayor, I did not receive any public input in written form. Sandy, did you receive anything?
No, I did not.
Okay. And Jeff, before we kind of get into that, do you have anything you want to add at this time, or do you just, you want to save anything? Do you want to save your updates for the agenda portion, the council agenda portion?
Yeah, I think right now, let's get to the public hearing. Aaron, I can, we can talk a little bit more when we get to that summary.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay. Thanks, Aaron. Jeff, thank you. All right. So, we know how this works, right? We have testimony in favor of the ordinance amendment, and then we take testimony in opposition. And then if we have testimony in favor or in opposition, then we give those individuals the opportunity to have a rebuttal on any of the discussion that they might have given us before. We do ask that you give your name and address, and since this is a public hearing, we do limit your time to three minutes or less on the discussion. Okay? With that said and all set up, Aaron, I heard you that you did not receive any written request to give information to us on this. So, I guess I'll open it up right away to anybody that's listening tonight that would like to give testimony in favor of the, of this ordinance amending Chapter 17 of our zoning code. And if you'd like to, there's a, there's a spot on your teams where you can just hit and raise your hand and then we'll have Aaron pick you off, pick you up that way. So, or you could just raise your hand if I could see you. But, but there is, up on the top, there's a place for you to just click on that hand and then we'll be able to see that and then we'll, we'll choose you. So, at this time, is there anybody that would like to give testimony in favor of the amendment? Anybody that'd like to give testimony in favor? All right. Anybody that would like to give testimony in opposition to the ordinance amendment? And I see you have one that, well, it wasn't a hand, but what do we got here?
I do see a hand from Rick Walter.
Okay. Rick, if you want to just, we know your name, but if you just want to say your name and, and your address and then just go ahead and talk.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rick Walter at N 1397 Cedar Lane, Wapaka, Wisconsin. So, I'm mostly in favor of everything. There are some language issues in particular that I'm concerned about, and so I'd like to just go on record in this public input about those. It's pertaining to mostly two sections of the ordinance or the update. One would be in the B7 district as it pertains to the language that was done with new zoning a few years ago. And, you know, the impetus behind that was to develop the riverfront district. So, our project has been moving ahead, but there are a few things that I'd just like to reiterate here within the limited timeframe I have, if you'll allow me. So, I'm going through the document on the revised PPH draft, and I'm on page seven, commercial uses, and as it pertains to the B7. One is offices and professional offices. Right now, I'm not sure how that's defined, but we, I'm not sure that we would need more offices like title companies, insurance companies, offices that don't pertain to unique opportunities for retail shopping and downtown historic visiting as far as that goes. The next one would be down on page nine, places of worship. I'm not sure that that has context in terms of the B7 riverfront district. So, I'd like to consider having that struck from the option for what applies to the zone district. Also, under utility communications and transportation uses below, essential services. As defined in this section, essential services doesn't seem to pertain to what would fit for B7 as far as essential services go. So, I'd like to see that struck from that as well. And by the way, this was all very well-written and updated, and I'm, like I said, very much in favor. There's just some tweaking that I think needs to happen. Next, under indoor/outdoor recreation uses, the indoor recreation commercial. Again, I think that may be not the best use for the small area for our downtown commercial district in B7 in particular that that would apply to. Next, on the same page would be amateur radio antenna under section 17.3.314. It's about amateur radio towers, not antennas. So, for example, if I decided as an amateur radio person, I wanted to have an antenna so I could use my rig, would I be required to have a permit? And would this be limited to tower issues or antenna issues? So, that might need to be just cleaned up and defined. Next page, 110, page 10, other uses. The language in those two areas below, I understand what they mean. I think they just need to be a little more, or a little less ambiguous in terms of their language. But I do get the gist of what the intent of the code there is. All right. Now, moving down into the next section, page...
You have, you have 10 seconds here.
Okay.
So, you know, I think the best way to handle this, Rick, I appreciate you going through this and you feel like, I feel like what you're saying is important to us. So, I think the best way to handle this is for Aaron and Jeff to give you a call at some time. Maybe not tonight, but just go through those items with you. I think that would be wonderful.
Yeah. As long as this is a kind of a living document and there's options, I guess, you know, I just wanted to go on record. I didn't have a lot of time to go through this because I just got worried about it this afternoon. So, I'd be happy to do that and thank you all for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Rick. I'm sorry I had to cut you off, but yeah.
No, not a problem. Thank you very much.
All right. Awesome. Anybody else that would like to give testimony? All right. Let's, let's close this hearing then. I'll close this hearing at 6:13 PM. All right. Next up, we have our regular city council meeting. And you have that agenda in front of you. I will call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, October 20th, 2020, and it is 6:13 PM. And let's all stand up and say the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
On the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would say in the future, if we're going to have to continue virtual meetings, we might have to take turns saying it, but I'd hate to be the guy that forgot one of the words. So, we'll move as we have. Sandy, you want to read the clerk's open meeting statement, please, for us?
This meeting and all other meetings of the common council are open to the public. Proper notice has been posted and given to the media in accordance with Wisconsin state statutes, so the citizens may be aware of the time, place, and agenda of this meeting.
And take role again for us, Sandy.
Brian Smith?
Here.
Steve Hackett?
Here.
Lori Chestnut?
Here.
Paul Hagan?
Here.
Alan Keeland?
Here.
Scott Pritchatsky?
Here.
Dave Peterson?
Here.
Paul Mayo?
Here.
Dimitri Martin?
Here.
Mary Fair?
Here.
And Eric Olson?
Here.
Ten present, we have a quorum.
All right. Next up is your, our consent agenda. Sandy, you have one item there?
Yes. Under number five, consent agenda, letter A, monthly reports. Number seven, the city administrator's report for the month of October was uploaded to the city website.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, we need a motion to approve that consent agenda. Again, these are items that we vote on with one motion. I guess I didn't ask. Does anybody want to see any item on the consent agenda moved from there to the regular agenda where we would discuss those items individually and vote on them individually?
Alan moved to approve.
Lori second.
Motion by Alan Keeland, second by Lori Chestnut, that we approve the consent agenda with that one addition. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. All right. Under regular agenda, nothing, nothing additional there. So, what you see is what you have there. We would just be looking for a motion to approve that.
Olson to approve.
Lori second.
Motion by Eric Olson, second by Lori Chestnut, that we approve the regular agenda as printed. Discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against, motion carried. Moving on to non-agenda items and announcements, this is for public input. Do we have anybody, council staff, or anybody else that is attending tonight that would like to speak to us on a non-agenda item?
I'd like to say something.
Sure. Is that Dimitri? I'm sorry.
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, this is in behalf of one of our residents who sent me a Facebook message. His concern is that with all the wildfires out west, it's got him thinking that when he first bought his house in Wapaka, every utility company would come through and clear the brush, trim the trees around and under the power lines. So, hearing many of these fires out east are causing power lines to create fires, I guess, you know, he's, he's concerned about the upkeep of those. He noticed that for several years, nothing has been cleared in, in the area around his house. It's become overgrown in many places throughout the city, and he's worried about potential for a fire. And so, I'm not sure if that's something that falls under the city jurisdiction, or if that's something that deals with the transmission line company that owns it. But, but that was his concern.
Yeah. Thanks, Dimitri. I, I think the city does have some control over, at least, you know, asking them to clear that. But I think that's more of a Justin question, and he might have the right people to contact to find out more about that, too.
You want me to say something about it right now?
Yeah, if you, if you would, that'd be great.
Sure. So, yeah, the utility companies that deal with the overhead, some of them are really good about their maintenance, some of them are not. It's just kind of the fact of the matter. And when there has been certain issues such as storms, or when we see stuff being overgrown, we can request them to clean up those spots. And usually they're, they're pretty responsive of it. So, unfortunately, like I said, it's part of their maintenance program, and some of them take it more serious than others.
All right. Thanks, Justin. Anybody else that would like to give us public input?
Hello?
Yep.
I got lost. I lost connection there and I just came back. So, I'm not sure if you asked me something, but...
We did not ask you anything, but Justin did try to clarify it. Did you hear Justin's clarification or not?
I didn't. As soon as you started speaking, my meeting froze up, so...
I didn't do that to you. So, maybe we can have...
I can call Justin tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. Or he could call you, too. It was a real quick explanation, but yeah, I think he, you know, you probably learn more from just talking to him face to face.
Yeah. I also want to talk to Justin about investigating train, the noise from the trains and whether or not it might be possible to revisit, the possibility of passing a, some sort of a no, no zone, no noise zone ordinance. And I'm sure he knows a lot more about it than I do. So, we'll talk about that and maybe at a future council meeting, too.
Okay. All right. Any other public input? All right. Let's go to community department head reports. I, I don't, I didn't look at all the names that are on here, but yeah, I, okay, I see them now. So, Ian Teal, who's from the Wiga Arts, is speaking under the community section tonight. So, Ian, welcome.
Hi.
What's going on?
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. My name is Ian Teal, and I am the executive director of the Wiga Arts Organization, also known as Wiga Arts. Wiga Arts owns and operates the Gerald Opera House in Wiga, which was purchased in 2007. I wanted to thank you for allowing us to take this time to be here today in front of your council. Wiga Arts is a member of the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network that is a result of the Wapaka Cultural Plan that was initiated in 2018. I am here today representing the Wapaka Area Arts and Culture Network, informing the council and thank the council for the continued support of the arts in our communities. So, generally, what Wiga Arts does is we present concerts, plays, and musicals, and we host workshops for youth in different creative fields, including filmmaker, filmmaking, theater, theater games, and improvisation, and songwriting. And our largest annual event is the Wiga International Film Festival. And this year, we are doing virtual with the film festival. And while we are not bringing business into town, this year, we'll be still raising the public's awareness about our area. We have an excellent lineup of films, including one by recent Wapaka High School graduate, Mark Kilo Coin. Sorry about the pronunciation. Other films with a Wisconsin connection include a film about the Old Glory Honor Flight's trip to Vietnam. There's a film about the filmmakers Order and Herzog and Earl Morris set in the 1970s about their time spent in Plainfield with the intent to dig up Ed Gein's mother's grave. And there are many other films about Wisconsin, including a feature film with some Hollywood actors called Small Town, Wisconsin. In fact, we have a total of 68 films this year from all around the globe. And we'd like to especially thank the Wapaka Area Community Foundation for the generous grant, which is helping us make this year's film festival possible. Adapting to COVID has been a challenge, challenge for us. We've not had any public events at the Gerald since March, and we do not see it's opening up again until probably the fall of next year at the earliest. However, this spring, we did have an online screenwriting workshop for teenagers. And in fact, most of those students were from Wapaka High School. And while the workshop went very well, we had originally planned to produce one of the screenplays over the summer with a film workshop with the youth, but that had been put on hold. This past August, we were able to present drive-in movies and a drive-in circus at the Wapaka County Fairgrounds. This was made possible by local sponsors, including the Fox Brothers, Lyons Remax Real Estate, Farmer State Bank, and Hutchinson Insurance. And we'd also like to especially thank Ann Katamasa and the Wapaka County Parks Department for their assistance and helping us to make our drive-in circus a successful event. We are also collaborating with the Wapaka Community Theater with the production of the radio play Frankenstein. Originally, this was planned as a live performance, but now we're, it's going to be limited to a radio broadcast from Gerald Opera House. The play will be broadcast on Wapaka radio stations 96.3 on Halloween Eve at 7:00 PM and 99.1 on November 1st at 4:00 PM. And hopefully, next year, the plan is to do this live. So, hopefully that can happen. While the future remains uncertain, we are still planning another online screenwriting workshop for next spring and hopefully film workshop over the summer. Wiga Arts feels that arts and culture are an important part of society. We certainly feel engaging and educating youth in the arts is one of the most important aspects of creating a new and better community in which to live. At this time, Wiga Arts is not seeking any financial support from the City of Wapaka, but we do greatly appreciate the time and consideration that this council has taken to provide platforms and support for all artistic endeavors in our communities. Thank you all for your time. I'd be glad to take any questions.
Thank you, Ian. Does anybody have any specific questions for Ian or the Wiga Arts? Thank you. Appreciate you attending this tonight.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to department head reports then. And as I picture council chambers again, I'm going to start over on the left. And Kathy, do you want to help start? Kathy, you there?
She's, she's on. Maybe it's just not working. I see your name.
Okay. Well, we, we'll move on and we'll see if we can catch her later. She might be talking, who knows? All right. Let's, let's move to the library then. Peg, you want to give us an update?
Thanks. Hello, everyone. There, as you know, I spoke to the council two weeks ago, talked about no in-person browsing. So, that did go into effect the 9th of October, and we have kept that up. We did have a meeting on Monday. Every two weeks, we're going to revisit the decision to allow that again. And since cases have not improved and we haven't seen a reduction that we're looking for, we will continue the no in-person browsing for some time. But there are study rooms available for up to two hours, computers for an hour daily, and lots of other services which we've outlined on our website. We do have a reading challenge that's going on right now. It's called Read, Learn, Grow, and it's encouraging you to read outside of your own experience. So, to read about people who are different than you are, who come from different backgrounds. Maybe they're Native American, they're of Asian descent, or Black Americans. So, all of that, those details are on our website. We are having a paranormal visitor, well, actually a paranormal explorer. The visitors are something he'll talk about. So, Kurtz is going to take, Kurtz Stratz is going to take you on a virtual journey exploring haunted locations. So, that's at 12:30 on Halloween Day. So, if you're available, you can tune in virtually. Please register at our website to get that Zoom link. Something brand new, our quarantine requirements have changed to be 24 hours, which means that now our delivery is faster, greater customer service, and we can allow 25 holds for our library patrons, which is a lot more than it was with 10. And remember, call us and request a book. Even if we don't own it, we're going to consider purchasing it. We do a lot of purchase order requests, and we get a lot of new items all the time. Book packs are available. So, if you have kids who need books for school, call us and we can get those from our collection. Ask for a current newspaper or a magazine through Curbside. We have some grab and grow kits, go kits for activities to do at home. All of these things are detailed on our website. And let us fax, print, or, or print your homework for you. So, go to our website and get all those details. And if anybody has any questions, please email or call me. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Peg. Anybody have any questions or comments for Peg? All right. I, I know that Tom Hart does not usually give a report, but I just wanted to recognize that Tom is at our meeting tonight. Tom, how you doing?
I'm doing good, Mayor. For a second, I thought you were going to call on me to do a report, but I'm glad to say hello.
Yeah. We'll, we'll keep it easy for you. All right. Across the aisle there from Tom then is Justin.
Thank you, Mayor. My update, seen on page five through seven of the packet. At our wastewater plant, we have our two big projects, aeration upgrade and our clarifier projects. Those are winding down, and we're expecting to have those complete by the end of the month. Our mercury program, we're sending out letters this week to the dental offices, and we're going to continue our project or our program, excuse me, with the updated standards that we have in our recent municipal code. Streetside, we installed a new sign on Churchill Street. It's right next to the crosswalk by Riverside Drive there. And what we have done, working with the school, is restricted the left turn. As you had northbound on Churchill Street, left turn on Park Avenue during the times of 7:00 AM and 8:00. and 8:00 AM, and then again, uh, at 2:00 PM, uh, to 3:00 PM. Uh, and this has been done, um, talking with the school district, uh, just because that turning movement, when we have allowed that, has really backed things up in that area uh, during those school in and school out times. Uh, so the sign, um, seems to be working well. When we have done a trial, the traffic has flowed much better. We've seen a lot less, uh, traffic congestion and school buses are able to get in and out quicker and to the high school and back, uh, much more efficiently. Uh, main street plans are out there. The contractors are currently reviewing them. Uh, bids are due by mid-November, uh, so we're going to know here in about a month, uh, where that, um, where those bids are going to come in and where we're at with our budgeting. Uh, Granite Street, uh, is coming to a, a quick end here. We've got a lot of work done in the last, uh, couple of weeks. We put down a whole bunch of concrete, uh, basically replacing all of the curb and gutter out there and about 50% of the sidewalk. And what that means is a great improvement, uh, to our pedestrian facilities and meeting ADA standards out there. Leaf pickup has started. Uh, page seven, I included a map that we made just this year. This is brand new. Uh, we have, have been advertising, put it in the newsletter, uh, to kind of help give a better visual picture of where we're going to be, uh, during the pickup times. We have the schedule on there, uh, and this is a rotation every single year. Uh, we realized that not all the leaves are down, so we're going to be hitting, um, obviously the areas that we should be first and then just continuing on with the rotation. And we'll be circling through, uh, probably several times before the year's over with to try and get, well, basically get all the leaves picked up. Waterside, uh, we assisted Fable Collision Center, uh, with a new utility connection. So it, as you'll remember, they have annexed into the city, so we now have a new utility customer out there. Uh, guys have been busy. We found and fixed a number of leaks underneath the streets. Um, well, again, just keeping busy, uh, getting those leaks fixed. And then finally, uh, tree planting, we were able to pick that back up. Uh, we had to, uh, basically delay that from the spring because of the COVID issues that we had. Uh, we were able to get that, uh, trees planted, uh, within the last couple of weeks here. And with a DNR grant that we received, it's been 100% paid for, uh, and we hired out a contractor to do that for us. So that's basically it for me, Mayor.
Thank you, Justin. Hey, Justin, uh, so the leaf pickup by the wards, is, is that on our website, city's website? So if somebody wants to know when their leaves are going to be picked up?
Yes.
They can go there? Okay.
Yes, it should be, and I know Josh has been advertising it on Facebook as well.
It's on the website and Facebook.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else, questions for Justin? All right, let's go to Andrew in Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. Um, starting down in the senior center, we've been keeping an eye, obviously, on what's going on with COVID, uh, numbers as well. Um, did have a discussion with the Wapaka, uh, county health officer earlier this week. Um, we're just going to make some real minor changes down there, but, uh, I feel like things have been going pretty well down there. Um, we're going to cut back on a few classes that use a lot of equipment, um, to try to cut down on that, um, you know, touching of equipment and having to clean it afterwards. Um, we're going to recommend that people wear masks during exercise if they are able to. Um, it's not an requirement, but just trying to kind of recommend that. And then just continuing to recommend that people don't, um, group up before or after, uh, their programs as well. Um, and just kind of coming, doing their thing, and then, and then leaving afterwards. But things have been going really well down there. It's been very busy down there. Um, and I, I think we're in a good spot. We just wanted to confer, uh, with the county health officer and make sure. Um, parks, we're into the time of year where we're going to start blowing out all the lines, make sure everything's ready to go for winter as the weather gets colder here. Um, just trying to keep up with leaves and mowing. And, um, over the winter, we're going to do a couple of projects. We're going to look at upgrading, uh, the Riverview Shelter. We have some wood there that's starting to rot on the bottom. Um, so we're going to fix that up, make it look really nice. Um, and our park superintendent and Cemetery Sexton will be working on that, um, to upgrade that park a little bit. Um, speaking of shelter rentals, we were down overall, uh, obviously, uh, through the summer. We didn't start till July, if you remember, with shelter rentals. Um, so looking at last year, we had 153 through the whole summer, um, and this year we had 58. So, um, not too surprised, but just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. Some of our big plans that we're working on this summer, um, are getting close to the court plan. Our comprehensive outdoor rec plan, uh, is almost done. We'll be reviewing that in park board here soon. Uh, they'll make a, hopefully, a recommendation to bring that to council, and then I'll present that to council and, and seek approval for that here in the future. And then the lake management plan, um, the stakeholder survey has been sent out, and we'll look for, you know, what type of responses we get for that. Um, that's more of a, a year and a half, two-year project, so that will continue throughout the winter and into next summer. Um, rec side, we just have our, uh, big Halloween event coming up. Now, usually we would have that at the rec. We would have 200 to 300 people here, um, generally, if not more. Uh, but this year will be a drive-in event or a drive-through event, and then we'll have a drive-in movie afterwards. So, um, a lot of good advertising there. I think we'll see a pretty good crowd, uh, for that. Some things that are finishing up would be our esports league, um, that is new. Our football camp that we ran differently to keep people safe. Had another conversation with the Wapaka County Health Officer in the school about doing our instructional beginner and intermediate, um, basketball programs, uh, making sure that we're being safe. And I think we've got the green light on trying to go forward with that with some different precautions. We'll follow the school's, um, physical education guidelines that they follow. Um, we'll follow some other, um, guidelines such as masks, and everyone will have their own basketball, keeping kids separated. Um, and we'll hold that at the school afterwards as long as school is, um, still in person. So we're working together with the county and the school to make sure that we're doing things safely. And I think, um, we'll be able to move forward, uh, in a positive direction with that. And, um, that's all I have.
All right. Uh, thanks, Andrew. Any questions, comments for Andrew? All right, uh, pinch hitting for the chief tonight. We got, uh, John Helgeson. Helgy?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, on Tuesday, October 13th, the, uh, police commission met virtually. Uh, during the meeting, we reviewed the, uh, monthly reports from, uh, September monthly reports and, uh, also the expense reports. Um, it should be noted that the department is over budget at this time, mostly due to, uh, COVID supplies. We will get those reimbursed through CARES Act, and so that should even that out. Uh, we went over the, uh, chief's monthly report. There were, uh, I guess, three, uh, bigger calls of note. Uh, two businesses were burglarized and, uh, one residential burglary. They're under investigation at this time. Um, we also talked about the, our participation in speed grant for Wapaka County. Um, our officers stopped, uh, 54 vehicles, issued 16 citations, uh, three for speeding, three, uh, for seat belts, and, uh, 19 warnings, uh, for speeding were issued. This Saturday, uh, October 24th, we're going to be having a drug takeback, uh, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Um, it's going to be in the lobby of the police department. Uh, we're asking people to bring in their, um, unused or expired, uh, medication, which we will take. We, we don't accept the pill bottles, just, uh, we'll dump them out in the, uh, containers. Uh, we usually average about 50 to 60 pounds of medication to take back. However, we didn't have one in the spring because of COVID, so we kind of expect more. We would ask that, uh, citizens that enter the lobby wear a mask. And again, we don't take pill bottles. Um, some informational stuff, uh, we had Officer Zubi and Officer Ben Dinter save a couple of dogs this last month, and we put that on Facebook and had a lot of good hits from that, uh, some good comments. So that was nice to see. Um, we also are participating in a new app that's put out. That's Wisconsin Law Enforcement Guardians. Um, it's an app that provides, uh, ways to connect directly with statewide peer support resources, chaplains, and mental health professionals. Officer Zubi is actually, uh, on that team and, uh, directly participating in that app. Uh, we also went into a closed session, and after that session was over, we decided to promote Officer Zubi to Sergeant Zubi now. He is going to be replacing, um, Brent Krieger, who resigned this last month. So with that, uh, that's into my reports.
Thank you, John. Uh, anybody have any questions or comments for the captain? All right, uh, Kathy, are you? Oh, no, let's go to Josh. Let's go to Josh, so I don't forget him tonight.
Okay, um, I'll start on the IT side of things, kind of two big projects on that side. Um, a couple of years ago, we started upgrading some of the technology in the council chambers. In that year, we just didn't have enough money to finish that whole project. We got some new mics and did the TVs and some stuff, and it kind of stopped. And we found out that the expenses to do more of the upgrade or finish that project in there were eligible for the CARES money because it can help facilitate hybrid meetings, um, to work remotely. So, um, we're going to finish the audio system upgrades. We've purchased iPads for all the desks in there, so all the groups that use it, aside from just say council, park board, library board, um, they can come in, sit down, use the iPad to access their meeting packet and their material. It'll just kind of be there and ready to go, and doing some enhancements to the, uh, video display system in there too. So kind of finishing up what we didn't finish a couple of years ago and, um, helping to spend the CARES money allocated to the city so that we're not giving, um, too, giving back too many unused funds. Um, the other big thing on the IT side is the software our community and economic development, uh, department uses right now isn't working as well for them. So they've started a process to look for software that would bear fit their needs for building inspection and code enforcement and some of those items. We found in that process, a lot of those software packages met other needs for the city, some of which were identified in our strategic plans, such as doing, um, electronic permits and licenses through the clerk's office, maybe helping to, uh, improve our dog and license, dog and cat licensing and some other things. So we've been going through a process right now evaluating those packages. We've kind of narrowed down to two preferred ones, um, at this point. Uh, community media side of things, I've been working with Winchester Academy. Typically, we tape some of their programs, and they're not able to hold their programs in person, so I'm working with, uh, them, uh, with WinTV and Wapaka Radio to do a, kind of a smaller abbreviated Winchester series this fall. Um, the other thing my staff is working on is, uh, we released a survey to the public internally, to staff and elected officials, and, and to the different partners we work with, such as Winchester, the Historical Society, to start getting feedback about the city's community media. And as we've been in this pandemic, we've been doing a lot of things we haven't done. There's a lot of things that we typically do that we're not doing, and it just seemed like a good time to review everything, get a gauge where we're at. Are there some things maybe we don't need to do anymore that aren't relevant? Are there some new ideas we should be doing to most effectively, uh, use the resources we have? And I'm going to leave that survey available till mid-November, and we'll review what results we get and have some discussions on that. Um, Wapaka Online, um, I've been talking about kind of a couple of different projects we've been trying to move forward with. Uh, one of them's working with, uh, the town of Caledonia, and I'll have details on that tonight on a lease agreement. Um, going to be starting work pretty soon on a grant application to apply for another State of Wisconsin Public Service Commission, uh, broadband grant. And that's something I'll, I believe I'll have to bring that to council next month. Um, so you'll learn more about that project. But we're going to tie in some of these towers we'd like to build into one project and see if we can get some funding to help offset that cost. And we've been starting to find out that the 500, uh, meg of bandwidth we have for the system were within a couple, out on that, went to spectrum to get a proposal on pricing, and it's 26 more dollars a month to double that to a gig. So, um, sometime in the near future, we'll be working through that process. And that's all I've got.
Mayor, I think you're on mute. Can't you read my lips? Uh, so, uh, uh, thank you, Josh. Any questions or comments for Josh? Kathy, are you on? All right, well, let's move to Sandy then. Sandy?
Thank you, Mayor Smith. My report can be found on pages 28 and 29. As of 4 o'clock today, my office has issued 1,364 absentee ballots. And I, I ran the numbers. We've already issued 41% of our total registered voters. So that's quite a huge amount. Um, also, we're still going to be absentee voting through the rest of this week until 4:00 PM, and then again next week from 8 till 4. And Thursday, the, um, 29th, and Friday, the 30th, are both until 5:00 PM. And that's it for me.
All right. Thanks, Sandy.
Thank you.
Any comments for Sandy? All right, uh, let's go to Aaron.
All right, thank you, Mayor Smith. Uh, my report, as noted before, was uploaded to the packet. You should be able to see it on your page, um, on your screen. First thing I'll say, and it's been touched on a little bit by Peg and Andrew, but, uh, we had our COVID update on Monday of this week, and everything is pretty much tracking similar to what it was last week and the week before. Um, hospitalizations in the area is, are continuing to remain somewhat the same, um, which is really, to be honest, probably positive news at this point. Their hospitals are full, but they're not, uh, growing exponentially with intake, so that's a plus. One thing that, that Peg and Andrew did not touch on was trick-or-treating. That's something that everyone knows that's coming up here in about 10 days or so. Uh, we will be talking more as city administrators in the county tomorrow on this. We have a, uh, kind of a bi-weekly meeting. That's tomorrow morning with county public health. Um, so far, the updates we got from county public health is that they still feel like that's something that can happen safely. They have a list of guidelines that they sent out to me today. Um, and we would certainly, if, if we move forward like we're thinking, we would certainly promote that on Facebook web, our webpage, and ask people to share that. So, uh, that's a part of the conversation. Uh, as you'll see in my report, I'm just going to highlight a few of them. I won't go through all of it, but, uh, one piece of exciting news, Thomas Trail in Cherokee Court, which is a subdivision just north of Swan Park. I've mentioned in the past that we were working with Amherst Telephone Company on helping them distribute some surveys to see if there was interest in getting in there. That's just been a tough area for us to service from a Wapaka online standpoint, uh, because of the trees and the topography. Um, so really, there hasn't been good internet. No charter is not in there, uh, so we haven't had really reliable internet in that area. And that's tough for not only the current residents that are there, but there's also 15-plus lots that are vacant that are not being developed, uh, and at a, at a rapid pace. And you certainly think that that could be one reason. So we're hoping that removing that barrier can help with some growth in that Thomas Trail Cherokee Court area. Um, we also have had our business incentive program meetings or with a group that we coined, the Economic Development Advisory Group, on September 21st and October 12th. That group has given really good input, uh, to us as a core team here. Um, and we are looking, we're looking forward to presenting what we think will be a really impactful and positive program in which we can use our tools through TIF 10, uh, to have a, have a positive impact in a, about a three-year period in the downtown area. So we'll look forward to bringing that to you guys, uh, in the first November meeting. Uh, Ju, you know, training's been a tough thing on all of our work lists and department heads. Um, we always have, it has our goals to get to a bunch of trainings, be involved in our associations, and it, it just hasn't been that easy to do this year because no one's gathering. You're not getting that networking experience. However, we were able to find a good opportunity. Uh, Justin, myself, and Sue from the library, Sue Abrahamson is, um, we're all attending a Harwood Public Innovators Lab. Uh, thanks to Peg for kind of pointing out that opportunity. She's, I know she's been in some of those trainings. She's, I know she's been in some of those trainings in the past and she has found them to be very valuable. So we're doing that every, I think it's eight different Thursdays moving forward. We've been through two and we're debriefing every couple of weeks there. So that'll be enjoyable to go through that and get some learning done between the three of us. Wanted to touch, just because I've had some comments and some questions from some older persons on Ruby's Pantry and the old Churney Building, some activity there. We have been in touch with them. They are looking at pricing and trying to do some research on if anything were able to happen at that location in the future, they're still going to need to know what kind of things they're going to need to do to become compliant with commercial code. And they're just doing some homework on that right now and obtaining things. We'll talk a little bit about the zoning code and how the Fulton Street overlay district would impact that whole project. But we'll get into that in a little bit in this meeting. Jeff will talk about that a little bit. But I wanted everyone to know that we are aware what's happening there and we've been in touch with them. I thought that was important to know. There has been another round of grant funding for small businesses. The, we're all in grants. It's the second round. And I think last time, 84 WAPAC area businesses took advantage of this. So we tried to promote that with help from the Chamber of Commerce and Terry and her staff. I think we got the word out and hopefully as many can take advantage this time around. St. Mary's Arts Center Task Force, there will be a meeting on October 28th. They have come to a conclusion with their feasibility study. Myself and I believe Andrew Dane will be sitting in on that task force meeting on the 28th. And then they plan to come to council on November 17th to report out on their results. You'll see a list of the meetings and such that I've been involved in since September 15th at the bottom of that report. The only other thing I'll say is just to want to give our staff, our division heads, our department heads, our supervisors a ton of credit for the responsiveness and the communication that they've shown in a very, very timely manner. We've had some COVID cases impact our organization. And there's been nothing but fantastic communication from everybody to make sure that we get into the appropriate scenario and take the appropriate precautions for that scenario. Every scenario is different, as we found out. And we are leaning on the county recommendations and healthcare recommendations to address them. So, so far, so good. And I think, Mayor Smith, that is all I really have for my report.
All right. Thanks, Aaron. Any questions, comments for Aaron? All right, let's go on to unfinished business then. We have a second reading of ordinance number 10-2020. This was an ordinance creating a new section in Chapter 13.01 parent 10, which dealt with lead service line replacement. Justin, you want to just hit on this again for us?
Absolutely, Mayor. So the ordinance is starting on page 61 of the Packet through 63. So this is Lead Service Line Replacement Ordinance, which is something that is very common now in many municipalities throughout the state. It's urged by the DNR to adopt these things. We do have lead service lines in the city. And it's worth clarifying that our lead is basically a lead gooseneck, two to three-foot piece of lead from Water Main that attaches to a service line, which can be made of various materials after that. But if any portion of a service line is lead, the whole thing is considered a lead line. And studies have shown that anytime, you know, a partial lead line or a full lead line is disturbed, whether through maintenance, repairs, or whatnot, that the lead levels concentrations in drinking water increase significantly. So basically, this ordinance, what it does is it handles that issue where when we find them or if we know where they are and they need to have work done, the entire line must be replaced. It's forbidden to do any kind of partial replacements. And moving forward, when we find them, again, we need to take them fully out. The other caveat of this ordinance is, once we have it in place, we stand a better chance of getting additional grant funding in the future. We're using up the last of our grant funds now on Granite Street. But I'll be looking to get more into the future here. We have projects where we know where we're placing these lead lines. And I need, well, I'm going to try and seek those grant fundings just to keep the cost down on our residents. There is a, there is a financial, obviously, burden to this. If we don't get the grant money or in the future when the grant money is gone, then that portion of the lead line on the private property is the responsibility of the owner. We can assess this per our assessment process that we typically do right now. This ordinance allows 10 years instead of the typical seven. So it gives those property owners a little bit more time to pay off because these can be somewhat burdensome financially to recover from. So we added that little caveat on there just to try and ease that burden in the event that the property owners will need to pay for it. So basically, that's it. That first section, the findings, is basically where it lays out why this is so important.
All right. Thank you, Justin. Justin, or Sandy, or Aaron, have we gotten any comments between the first reading and the second?
I have not.
I have not either.
I got one positive on the street from Nolan.
Okay, awesome.
I'm sure he's listening.
Yeah, that's good to hear. Okay, so we'd be looking for a motion to approve this ordinance?
This is Alan, move to approve.
Second, Martin.
Okay, we got a motion by Alan Keeland, second by Dimitri Martin, that we adopt ordinance number 102020, an ordinance creating a new section in Chapter 13.01 parent 10 as it deals with lead service line replacement. Any discussion? Sandy, you'll call the roll.
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Porczatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Mayo?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
Andrea Colson?
Aye.
10 ayes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Justin. Sandy, thank you. All right, let's go to new business. This has to do with the public hearing that we had before. This is the ordinance number 092020. This is an ordinance repealing and recreating Chapter 17 of the zoning code. And this is the first reading of this. And Aaron, you're going to set this up?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Smith. So everyone kind of heard me set it up in the public hearing. Again, this is a one-page summary and this is difficult. Like I said, about six, seven planned commission meetings and a ton of work from Jeff Sanders and Plan Commission. What we're going to do here tonight is Jeff is going to take about 10 minutes and he's going to go through the summary of the changes that are the most substantial and the most noteworthy. And then we're going to throw it back to you guys as council members for any comments, questions, so on and so forth. We had the public hearing tonight. We have the first reading tonight. And then if nothing was changed, the second reading would happen the first meeting in November and we'd go through. If things are changed, we can restart the clock. This is a big document. It is, you know, it was a long process, so feel free to ask questions. But without getting too much into it, Jeff, I'm going to go over and hand it to you to go through your summary and then we'll turn it over to council members for questions.
Thanks, Aaron. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. I think the one thing to keep in mind, and Aaron alluded to this earlier, the document before you is actually a comprehensive rewrite of the zoning code. In order to, if we were to try to describe all the changes to the document, we would spend the entire evening going through essentially almost every page of the document. So as Aaron mentioned, what we're doing here is focusing on those changes that reflect or represent a significant or a substantive departure from the existing document. So does everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, the first one is kind of a procedural thing. What we've done is moved all of the permitted uses, all of the uses that are currently listed as those permitted by right and special uses out of each of the various district sections into a land use matrix so that anybody who is looking to determine whether or not a given use is permissible within a given district need not search out all of the various districts, but can go to this one section and find everything there. So it's just, it's going to simplify the process, not only for applicants and those people who are interacting with the ordinance, but also for staff, for the Plan Commission, and for those of you on the council. It just, it'll make it easier to determine what is and what is not permissible on a given district. We've dealt with some recent issues. Developers within industrial districts proposing structures that are accessory structures that are effectively prohibited under the current ordinance because at present, the maximum height is 15 feet for an accessory structure. You know, we have something going on right now with the Reynolds Presto site where they're looking at a building for removing product or removing raw materials from train cars. And clearly, it would be difficult, if not impossible, to get a boxcar in a building that maxes out at 15 feet. So we're looking at updating this to a 50-foot maximum height. Probably the most significant change in terms of the landscape of the community is the creation of this Fulton Street corridor overlay district. And really, the purpose of this is to, well, it's to address some of the challenges that I think all of you are aware of within the Fulton Street corridor. But it's also, it's one of those situations where the challenges create an opportunity. And the opportunity is to develop this gateway or this entrance to downtown Wapaka, a very vibrant, ideally a 24/7 complement to the downtown that if it plays out right over time, could be this very, very fun visually appealing mixed-use zoning district or mixed-use district. The TZ Transitional Zoning District is just a placeholder. Right now, when a property is annexed into the city of Wapaka, it immediately defaults into an A1 zoning district, an agricultural district. And there are some challenges associated with that. It may be a residential property, it may be a commercial property. But the moment it's zoned A1, by law, it can avail itself that that property can avail itself of all the uses that are permissible in the A1 district. And I'm not so sure that some of the properties that have recently come in, I think earlier tonight, Aaron mentioned the Fable East property. I'm not sure that we want cattle grazing on properties that are going to be zoned commercial or industrial. So creating this thing called a TZ Transitional Zoning District provides a placeholder that basically says, once that property becomes part of the city of Wapaka, its existing uses freeze. Whatever those uses are are covered under this Transitional Zoning District. And then, once we define, once we identify the long-term district, it would transition over to that. We've expanded a lot of uses and clarified a lot of uses related to temporary structures and fence regulations. Regulation of mobile towers or cell towers had to be updated in response to state statutes passed within the last decade. Expanded and clarified the regulation of breweries, microbreweries, distilleries, craft distilleries, wineries, and boutique wineries to differentiate, you know, the line in Kugels of the world from that small batch microbrewery or the brew pub. Same thing again with distilleries and wineries. We've clarified and expanded the definition of a variety of different alternative energy systems, mostly to update with an existing law. It's called 660401, Wisconsin's Wind and Solar Access Law. Another pretty significant change, particularly in the residential districts, is the inclusion of accessory dwelling units. They're also called secondary suites. Historically, they were referred to as granny flats or mother-in-law cottages. Basically, they're a rather small 500, 600, 700-square-foot cottage in the backyard where someone can live and the property can be rented out. And I think this is one of those things that we may end up talking a little bit more about later. So I think I'll leave it for now. Amateur radio regulations, also referred to as ham radio. We updated the ordinance to be consistent with federal law. We combined the live rent and live work uses that existed within the B7 Riverfront District. The problems we had there with the previous or the current iteration is there was a lack of clarity and there created some ambiguity as to what uses were permitted by right and which required some sort of approval. So combining them addressed that. We created the business incubator as a use in the business and industrial districts as a way to not only allow for something called economic gardening, allowing the city to provide opportunities for startups to, startup entrepreneurs to get going, but also to grow in place. But the difficulty with this kind of use is often zoning ordinances don't allow for multiple different kinds of business uses or multiple different kinds of industrial uses on the same parcel. Creating this incubator use as a conditional use provides an opportunity. The site plan review process has been updated and expanded. We did not change the requirements for the gateway district or the historic districts, but we now have a much more clear site plan review process for all the commercial and all the, excuse me, all the business and all the industrial districts. And the real reason there is to provide direction to applicants so they know what it is that is expected of them as they come before us with the site plan. It helps them. It also helps the, it helps staff. It helps the Plan Commission, the council because we actually have a framework from which to review. We're not getting in a situation asking whether, you know, asking why someone chose that tree and not this tree and that sort of thing. And along with that, we established landscape standards and updated those a bit. We updated non-conformity regulations with state law. We pretty significantly, I wouldn't even say updated, we kind of rebuilt the signed regulations from ground up. And the main reason for that was a court case in 20, a Supreme Court case in 2015, which solidified or clarified the content neutrality requirement of sign ordinances. And basically said, you cannot regulate any aspect of the content of sign regulations. It's an infringement on First Amendment rights. And then finally, we clarified the roles of the various parties involved in this process. The current ordinance had a little bit of a braided procedural layout for zoning administrator, code enforcement officer, community economic development director, a building inspector and such. And it was potentially problematic from a legal standpoint should a decision of staff ever be challenged in court. So now what we have, hopefully, is a much, much clearer lane for a zoning administrator, his or her rules, her roles, code enforcement officer, et cetera. So that is hopefully close to 10-minute quick summary of a very, very substantial effort to rewrite the ordinance. And I will be happy to try to respond to any questions you may have.
So Jeff, thank you. Appreciate that. Council, any questions that you would like to ask?
Can we send stuff into Aaron or Jeff?
For what?
There was just, I had a couple of little things that passed through my mind. And it's just not, it's just going to be, I would just like to present that, you know?
So you certainly can pass it on to Aaron or Jeff, but if there's something, Lori, that you feel that the rest of the council might want to talk about too, this is probably a time to share it.
Okay.
But otherwise, either way.
I can do that. It was on the part for the development of the Fulton Street. And there was a timeline in there for like traffic or semis to be moving that said that they couldn't be from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And then there is also that one facility that wishes to join in to that area. And, you know, that might be the only time someone can get out of a situation, to get onto the road. So. of a situation to get onto the road. So just looked at, look at that and I just thought a little bit more about it and wondered if we shouldn't maybe think a little bit more, or if that's something that could be changed in, in the portion of it when it's going to be before you guys and, you know, to see if it meets the qualifications.
Sure. Alder Chestnut, the section that you're referring to is called loading and unloading standards.
Right.
Follows, where applicable, the covenants, conditions and restrictions of a mixed use development shall indicate the times when the loading and uploading of goods may occur on the street, provided that in no event shall loading or unloading take place after ten o'clock PM or before seven AM on any day of the week. Um, and that's standard language for mixed use zoning districts based upon, uh, the fact that a mixed use district could have, uh, well, a lot of uses that, um, may not be compatible with extra hour loading and unloading. So you may have, um, industrial district, light industrial, light manufacturing, commercial and other such uses, um, not only in close proximity, but immediately abutting, um, parcels that are multifamily or even single family in design. Um, now with, with that said, that's the explanation for why. There's no reason why those numbers can't be changed. Um, we probably do want to establish, uh, the parameters though. Um, and they can be different on weekdays and weekends, which is kind of common. Um, generally on the weekends, it would be a bit more restrictive. Um, so absolutely something that we can look at and I'd be happy to review with Aaron your comments. Um, I, I apologize jumping in with a kind of a procedural public hearing issue um, that I suspect all of you are aware of and I'll probably, um, well, I hope I don't sound condescending when I say this, but, uh, any changes that we make to the ordinance um, i- in this draft form potentially necessitates another public hearing. Um, even though we have a second reading coming in, I'll defer to attorney Hart on the clarification there. So I'm not sure how to complete that sentence. Substantive changes to the ordinance may require an additional public hearing.
Uh, this is Alan. Uh, in view of Rick Walters' comments earlier tonight, it seems to me that there might be some additional revisions that have to be made. And I know the plan commission will be meeting next week, uh, twenty-sixth, I believe it is. So we could not discuss it at that meeting because, um, the agenda is already set for that. Uh, I think that, that Mr. Walter certainly deserves to have his comments reviewed. And so I'm really reluctant to go forward with the first reading, uh, of this ordinance tonight.
Alan, I can, if, if you'd like, I can actually address a couple of those comments. I was taking notes while Mr. Walter was talking. Um, so his, he had seven, excuse me, six comments. One was, uh, and there were all questions of, of whether or not specific uses were compatible or conducive to the desires as of the B seven district as originally planned. Uh, the first one he mentioned was office and professional, excuse me, offices and professional offices. Um, those uses are currently permissible within the B seven district. So this is not a change. Essential services and indoor recreation, commercial, those uses are also currently permissible within the B seven district as used as permitted by right. Um, amateur radio, again, I, we updated that because federal law basically said you cannot prohibit amateur radio from any district. Um, there's, there's a prohibition against a prohibition, if you will. Um, places of worship, there's something called the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, RLU IPA. Uh, that effective, effectively says, um, local governments may not regulate a place of worship any more stringently or place any additional burdens on a place of worship that would be above and beyond what would be placed on any similar use, including a commercially used. So the question of course comes into play, are any of the uses currently permissible in the B seven district? Uses that would be comparable or compatible to a small place of worship. Um, and in my opinion, given the First Amendment implications, um, it's in the city's best interest to ensure that places of worship are a viable option there. Uh, the last comment he made was absolutely, um, critical, right? And that was the, uh, comment of other land use. I'm scrolling to that section of the, of the matrix to read it. Uh, so what it now, right, right now, we have a sentence that applies to conditional uses and a sentence that applies to permitted uses. But basically it says, um, quote, unlisted uses deemed by the plan commission to be substantially the same as a permitted use in the applicable, applicable zoning district. Once approved, this chapter shall be amended to include such a use as a limited, as a listed permitted use. And what that says basically is, let me back up. Um, by law, if you have an ordinance, a zoning ordinance that establishes uses that are permitted or uses that are special, um, any use not listed is effectively prohibited. There have been a couple of Supreme Court, excuse me, a couple of Wisconsin court cases that have corroborated that over time. So what we're trying to do here is say that if there is a use out there, and the example I've used, um, in plan commission meetings was, uh, let's say we list donut shop and somebody comes in with a proposal to build a, or to start a, a bagel shop. This would allow the plan commission to say, although donut shop is listed and bagel shop is not listed, we're going to allow a bagel shop because it's substantially the same as a donut shop. And if we do that, what I'm recommending is shortly thereafter, at the next round of zoning amendments, we amend the zoning ordinance to allow for a bagel shop. So that language that you see that Mr. Walter referred to is pretty common throughout zoning ordinances in the state of Wisconsin now. So I think those were the six, um, specific issues that Mr. Walter broke up or brought up.
I, I'll just say one other thing, uh, to Alan's comment. If there, you know, I know there sounded like there was a couple of things that, uh, Mr. Walter had on his list, that he was planning to communicate with us after. Our timeline would allow Alan for us to make an amendment to that plan commission packet. So if we want, now I'm not saying that you should or shouldn't go forward or not go forward with the first reading, but um, there would be an opportunity to have a discussion at least. Um, and I think Jeff and I could have a conversation with Rick about those other comments as soon as tomorrow. I mean, I don't know what Jeff's schedule is, but, but just a comment.
Another question I had was what mechanism we have for correcting any typos or omissions that are in this first reading? Um, for example, I, I found on page five or on page seventy-four of the, the council packet, um, where we're defining, um, the different districts and there's a word that's missing, um, in the PUD definition. It should be unit. Uh, the word unit should be inserted in there also, and it wasn't. So, um, yeah, the question is what mechanism is there for correcting any typos, et cetera?
Uh, the short answer is we, um, we correct them as we go. Um, generally, although I, although there have been cases that, that I'm aware of where, um, misspellings have led to problems, uh, in terms of administering enforcement and zoning code. Uh, most courts defer, whether through, be through deference or other, um, precedents, uh, defer to local government when it comes to honest typos and things like that. But uh, the short answer is if anybody finds them, I'll certainly try to correct them. Um, when it comes to, uh, spelling, I think we tackled most of that. But Alan, I'm actually looking at that section right now where it says, uh, PUD Plan Development District. I think the mistake was I was changing, I was recommending that it go from PUD to PDD, Plan Development District, not PUD, Plan Unit Development District. But we'll, we can talk about that and make that correction as well.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments, uh, about, uh, the ordinance? Hey, Tom Hart, I, I have a question for you because I'm not sure this ever came up before, but so we have it on here as the first reading. If council chose not to do the first reading, how would you go about that? I mean, we don't vote on it tonight. It's just the first reading.
Well, I think if you, if, if it was to be referred to, uh, planning, maybe just a motion to table.
Okay. Okay. All right, that makes. Okay. All right. Anybody else that have any other comments?
This is Peterson.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
I'm kind of, I think Aaron answered the question, but I thought, uh, due to the time restrictions on Mr. Walters tonight, you kind of cut him off. And he had a few more things he wanted to say, and I think he deserves that chance to be heard. And he also did say that he was open to a living document that could be adjusted as time progressed too. So that's just a, I'll throw in.
Yep. Thanks, Steve. Anybody else? Okay, so, um, Alan, you didn't officially make it as a motion, but, uh, I, I guess I'll throw it back at you.
Yeah, I will make the motion to table this, uh, until plan commission has had a chance to meet and discuss any revisions, uh, to be made to it.
This is Lori and I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Alan and a second by Lori that we table the first reading of the, this ordinance, uh, recreating the zoning code and, uh, sending it back to the planning commission. That's your motion, right? Alan, does that sound right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And Lori, that's what you understand?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Sandy, let's do a roll call vote on that.
All right.
Again, if you're, if you vote aye, you're, you're voting to table this and send it back to the planning commission. Okay, go ahead, Sandy.
Steve Hackett.
Aye.
Lori Chestnut.
Aye.
Paul Hagan.
Aye.
Alan Keeland.
Aye.
Scott Pachaski.
Aye.
Dave Peterson.
Aye.
Paul Neal.
Aye.
Dimitri Martin.
Aye.
Mary Fair.
Aye.
And Eric Olson.
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Okay, so a couple of comments then before we move on. One, Aaron and Sandy, make sure that you know that, uh, this is something, I, I think we need to post this somehow too. So we'll have to wait till after the planning commission. Um, Alan's statement about the planning commission agenda has already been put out. We, I think we have enough time to send out an addendum so we can put this on the agenda for next Wednesday's meeting, or next Monday, is it?
Monday.
Next Monday.
Monday, yeah, next Monday.
Plenty of time.
So we could do that. So
Yes.
if you want to see it on the agenda. And then two, Dave, Pete made the comment, three minutes wasn't enough. So if, if I let people go on for a little bit longer, it's not my fault, it's his fault. All right, I think that's it. All right, uh, let's, let's move on then. Uh, so we have the, uh, WPA labor agreement, uh, and that's of course our, our police union. Aaron, you want to take that?
Yes, Mayor Smith, I will go ahead and take that item. Let me get to the appropriate spot here. All right, council members, so you have a memo from me on page one seventy-five of your package, should be on your screen right now. Um, we are coming up on the end of the current agreement, which was a two-year agreement. Uh, in September, the city's negotiating team met with the union's negotiating team and, um, we actually got everything done in one evening. This, so I'm just going to give a brief summary and actually John, uh, Captain Helgeson and I spoke a little bit before the meeting and we're going to kind of kick it back and forth because some things are administrative in nature and uh, he can explain how it impacts them better than I can. Uh, but number one, the, the first change is in Article Six, uh, probationary period. So employees that are in the first six months, uh, in the past would not have qualified for holiday pay. Uh, in this, with this change, they would qual- qualify for that holiday pay. And that does match up with other employees in the city. So that would be bringing it to kind of an even with that specific thing. Uh, Article Nine, wages and hours of work. Uh, this is mainly administrative in nature. I'm going to go ahead and kick this to John, uh, for a little bit of an explanation.
So this primarily, primarily deals with the, uh, uh, swing shift position. They have the ability now under this contract to adjust their schedule if needed. They can work, uh, the shifts we have, which are six AM to five PM, eight AM to seven PM, five PM to four AM, and seven PM to six AM. But we use swing shift to cover, uh, vacations. And, uh, we also have an MOU that's out there that includes the eleven AM to, uh, ten PM and three PM to two AM. Now with this in the contract, it's all set in one place. So we don't have to look for MOUs. I think it's a positive thing for sure.
Thank you, John. Um, moving on, Article fourteen, uh, deals with vacations and vacation schedule. Uh, it has it, the, it's really moving the mark of when they earn a hundred and thirty-two hours. Um, the way that has been set up, it's every X amount of years. It's moving it back from eight years to six years of service. And this is one of, I think I would say, two things that speak a little bit to the ability to recruit um, and, and retain officers. Uh, there has been some turnover as of late, uh, and this vac- moving this vacation schedule. Uh, not only did kind of everyone feel like it could help with that issue, but it also actually matches it up, you know, when we're comparing to the other employees, uh, it matches it up closer to that schedule as well. So again, um, kind of narrowing the gap there. Article eighteen, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think that article also talks about the, uh, the way they can put in vacation, Aaron, which I think is going to save us some money in the long run. Um, officers that put it in a certain time period out will be guaranteed that vacation. Um, and it's going to be easier for us to schedule, uh, swing shift to cover that.
Yeah, I believe, um, if I'm not mistaken, John, I think that, uh, what a, if a officer that was newer to the force, uh, could put in vacation and have it planned and have the flights paid for and could get booted right up until the last second by an officer with more seniority, um, and then have to cancel their trip. And this, that's just cleaning that up. Am I explaining that correctly?
Yeah, that's correct. Two weeks out.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, so as we move on to Article eighteen, uniforms and expenses, pretty self-explanatory within the changes. Uniform allowance per employee shall be as follows. It's moving from four seventy-five to five hundred effective in two thousand twenty-one, and then it goes up twenty-five dollars a year, uh, the next two years, uh, two thousand twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three. And I do know equipment's become more expensive. Um, John, you want to touch on anything with that?
Well, for example, our, our pants are typically sixty, eighty dollars a pair. Our shirts are probably around sixty to seventy dollars a pair. So in just a, a pair of pants and shirt for the uniform, you're looking at a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty dollars probably typically. Um, so it adds up pretty quick. Obviously in the winter time, guys want new boots and I would say the average for those are probably somewhere around a hundred and thirty dollars. So you can eat up five hundred dollars pretty fast.
Thanks, John. Article twenty-six, uh, the duration of the contract itself, um, this is changing. Uh, this was agreed upon by both sides and it's a, a three-year instead of a two-year. So we would not be looking to, um, go back and enter into negotiations until the fall of two thousand twenty-three. Uh, this would be for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. And then the wages across that time period would be a two percent increase annually as shown in that schedule. Um, and that pretty much sums up uh, the changes that are being brought forward as a recommendation. And the recommendation from city staff would be to approve the agreement for the ratification between the city of Wapaka and the Wapaka City Law Enforcement Association uh, to be in effect from January first, two thousand twenty-one through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three.
Martin moved to approve.
Hackett second.
Motion by Dimitri Martin, second by Steve Hackett, that we approve of the WPA, PPA labor agreement. Any discussion? Uh, make sure that we know that the, uh, police union has already ratified this. Make sure that we know that the police union has already ratified this, and so they're just waiting for our approval. And I also wanted to, to thank Erin and Chief Hosele. We, we sat on that, the three of us sat on the negotiation teams, and we were able to get it done in, in less than two hours. So I mean, that was, it was a good night.
And Mayor Kathy, just Kathy was on that as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, Kathy was on remotely, wasn't she?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy, also. Okay, any other discussion? Sandy, you'll call her all?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Neal?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
Right, Erin, thank you, and Helgi, thank you. Let's move on then to a lease agreement between Wapaka Online and CHS Incorporated. And that's Josh.
Hey, I gotta turn my volume down in here, hold on. I'm just going to feed back, okay. For the past several months, I've been in discussions with the town chair in Caledonia, Paula Pagel, and they've been having a lot of challenges with internet there. That's a pretty outsider Reed Field, that's a very rural area. And the current providers there, Central Link and AT&amp;T, really aren't getting back to the town at all, aren't open to discussions. So they've been reaching out to some of the fixed wireless providers about their willingness to maybe come over there and help. I've been talking to her for a while. I attended one of their Plan Commission meetings to discuss internet. And what we've found over there, what Ralph and I found over there is that area is a lot like rural Wapaka areas that surround here, that it's hilly, there's a lot of trees, but there are pockets and areas that we could get into and get some of the residents better serviced. And what I told her is it looks like we can be part of the solution, not the entire solution. And through that, we found one really good location to get started over there, and that's the grain elevator structure at the Co-op on the north side of Reed Field. It's 180-foot-tall structure. Nick and Durant went there last week with an antenna. We can get a really good signal there, really good line of sight, direct back to Wapaka. And from that location, it's fairly central within their town, and we feel it's a good jumping point to get into a lot of these different little pockets that fixed wireless internet can excel in. I got in contact with the manager at the Co-op and started a discussion if they'd be open to allowing us to utilize some space up there, and they were. And their corporate office sent over a lease agreement, and I went back and forth with them a little bit on there. There were a couple initial terms on there that I wasn't comfortable with at a staff level on recommending. They were willing to change all those to get them to a place where we were comfortable with them. So the, the lease is included in your packet. And some of the highlights, I guess the main highlights on that, you know, most, most of the language in the lease is pretty standard tower rental language. But the main thing is, is it's a two-year initial lease with two-year renewal periods after that first two years. So that kind of gives us a safety net if we get in there and get going. And I, I don't think we'll find that this would be the case. But if we find out that we're not getting a lot of customers over there, we're only committed to two years. And like I say, I don't think that'll be the case. It's $100 a month. Electricity is included, and they do have the option to raise the rent 5% each renewal cycle. That's not guaranteed, but the language in there is they could raise it up to 5%. We've got spaced amount up to five antennas and the needed equipment on there. Kind of the only, only sticking point down there that we're not in love with is if we needed after-hours business act, after-business-hours access, basically after 5:00 PM or on a weekend, which would be pretty rare, we would have to reimburse them for staff time to be on-site with us. They won't allow us on the structure when they're closed by ourselves. But we kind of learn more about that charge, and it's, you know, reasonable. And when we look at some of our other sites, it's, it's pretty rare that, you know, that this would happen too often, you know, if it happened once a year, that, you know, might be it. One of the other points in their lease is our use of that structure would incur no cost to CHS Incorporated, aside from the electrical use, and like I said, everything else in there is standard language. In the packet, I included kind of the coverage map from that site, kind of the areas we could get into. We liked what we saw there, and I've got a couple pictures in there that just show, you know, it, it's nice and high. We were, when we got up on top, we were pretty excited about what we could see from there. We see a lot of silos in the distance. And there are a lot, a lot of houses nearby the structure that, per our research, the DSL provider that serves the area has really slow speed. So we think there are some easy built-in nearby customers. And it's going to take us adding two customers in Caledonia to cover the cost of this lease. So that's kind of the overview of the project and where we're at, and just kind of the main, kind of the main bullet points of the lease. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thanks, Josh.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. This is Martin.
Yeah, go ahead, Dimitri.
Well, it just seems to me like we're in competition for people to move into Wapaka. And so by making the land in the Caledonia area more, more livable for people who require internet, to me, it means that they might be willing to consider moving in that area instead of moving closer to our area. So I, I mean, a few dollars that, that it might make could cost us a lot in terms of, you know, four or five people a year, perhaps, maybe choosing to live somewhere else when, when otherwise they would feel like they would need to move closer to us to get access to our, our internet service. So I, it just seems to me like we're shooting ourselves in the foot by, by doing this.
Well, there's a couple ways to look at that. Number one, as of today, all but, all but four neighborhoods or areas in the city have spectrum or AT&amp;T high-speed internet. And the four areas that don't are Thomas Trail, the Eastgate subdivision, our industrial park, and then a neighborhood over on Hill Street. And we're in all those areas. So the city itself, Wapaka, say Wapaka is covered already. So we're not doing a disservice to the city that we've got poor internet anywhere within our limits. The other ways to look at it is, you know, it's more than just the city of Wapaka. You know, there's the surrounding areas, there's the county. And instead of just focusing on the city, what about drawing people nearby? Maybe there's some people that don't want the lifestyle of living in the city that prefer the rural area. Why not make, you know, our area and the surrounding area around us attractive by making these improvements?
I have a question.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, Josh, isn't there a movement though to have internet available in all these rural communities?
There's a number of different projects with low-orbit satellites and some other stuff. And, you know, one, that technology's unproven. Until it's actually in place and in use, you know, I think it's all unknown how well that's going to work. You know, another question with that, how soon is it going to happen? You know, you've been hearing about 5G for how many years? They're focused on the big cities. They're in Chicago, Milwaukee, New York. They're not in these rural areas, you know, no matter what the, you know, maybe aside from the low-orbit satellites, all these providers are focused on the big cities because they can make a lot more money in a small area than they would in a rural area. And, you know, my, my philosophy with Wapaka Online, since I've been involved with it, is we're, we're not business, we're service, and that's how I look at how we operate, you know. When I, when I say it's going to take two customers to cover this tower lease, a business, you know, a for-profit business won't look at it that way. They're going to look at it, it's going to take, you know, 100 customers at five bucks, some, five bucks of their payment per month to cover that, or, you know, whatever, they'd look at it totally differently. I've got a different eye on that. And, you know, I think the other comment with that is this is something we can do today. If new technology comes and makes us obsolete in five years, we've done our job. I don't want to see this go away in five years, but, you know, if that's what happens, that's what happens. We can't, you know, we can't.
But we had it for five years then. We've had, I want, actually, I was thinking you did a good job by reaching out like that, is what I was wanting to say, and I hope you understood it that way, is because we have opportunity to help people, and we are, you know, we're people who serve. So, that being said, good job.
If it's okay, I'm just going to make one comment to Dimitri's comment. And Dimitri, I, I think that's a fair question. I think, you know, one thing we've kind of had conversations about internally here is, I agree with you. We want, we want people to move to the city, that's been a big focus of ours. There's housing being built, we're, we're looking at continuing that trend. We think that increased housing and residence can lead to increased commercial. But also, I mean, I think one thing we've also talked about is viewing, you know, someone that moves into Farmington or Dayton or the town of Wapaka or, or the surrounding areas as a win for us too, and kind of winning regionally instead of just the city. You know, the more people that find this area as attractive, the more people that visit the, you know, we're probably the larger commercial hub in Wapaka County and the surrounding areas. So people will come and spend money here for businesses. And maybe that first step is moving to a place like Caledonia or outside and realizing, hey, I think we have a lot more to offer here. And I'm not trying to say anything negative about our surrounding areas, but I truly believe in what we are doing here in Wapaka and what everyone that lives here makes Wapaka. So I think that's kind of the thought. I, I think it's a, I think it's a fair question, but I, I guess I just wanted to share that, that, that mindset a little bit.
I have a question in regards to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are, are we adequately serving our surrounding townships already? Are there pockets within those townships that are, that are not able to get good internet?
There's a lot of pockets that cannot get good, good internet. But with the technology available to us, I think we're adequately serving the areas that that technology allows us to serve. I'd love to be serving more of those areas, but the laws of physics prevent it with the kind of equipment that's available for a fixed wireless ISP.
I think that you've done a great job here, Josh. I agree with Lori and others. And to that end, I'm going to make the motion that we approve the lease agreement between Wapaka Online and CHS Inc.
Okay, I heard Mary. So we got a motion by Alan Keeland, second by Mary Fair, that we, sorry, enter into a lease agreement with CHS Incorporated to utilize structure in Reed Field, Wisconsin to provide internet service for two years beginning October 1st, 2020 through Oc- October 1st, 2022. Any discussion? Thank you. One thing we have to remember, and I, I actually made recommendations a few years back about this, but remember that Wapaka Online is an enterprise fund. So, you know, it generates revenue and expenses. So as we vote on this, we're actually voting as basically the board of directors of Wapaka Online. And how is this going to help Wapaka Online to be more profitable? And I think that's helpful in this discussion that we're having tonight also.
Another point, just to jump in, is Wapaka Online does pay money to the general fund for all the services that are provided from it, such as billing and administrative support. I think about a quarter of my salary comes out of there. So Wapaka Line, you know, the more we bring in, the more we're able to do those sort of things too, that take a little bit of burn off the taxpayer dollars on some general fund items.
Yeah, good point. Okay, anybody else? Sandy, you'll call her all?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Neal?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Nae.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Nine ayes, one no, motion carried.
Josh, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, next up, actually, the next two, license report 1514 and 1515 have to do with a transfer of licenses. And I know we have, I think we have two people on, on our meeting tonight that have sat around to wait for this. One is Sharon Thurn from Shambone Thurn Real Estate. And then we also have the, the person that this is being transferred into. I'll just say his first name, Jose, instead of trying to say the whole name here. But Sharon or, or Jose, is there anything you want to say? Or, or just tell us what, what's going on here? I mean, I'm giving you an opportunity since you were sat through this whole thing.
I don't know, Dimitri, I, am I on or?
Yeah, you are now, Sharon. Go ahead.
Hello. Okay, so, you know, I just wanted to sit on it. I wasn't sure what was all being said tonight. Ignacio is looking to set up the restaurant and whatnot. So we're just, you know, this is the start of the first meeting, it's got more lined up. So we didn't know if we could do anything else.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, Ignacio is on, and I think so is Ken Wall. Ken Wall should be out there too.
I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear you.
Ken Wall should be out there as well, I believe.
Okay. All right. So correct me if I'm wrong here, I, Sandy or Erin or even Sharon for that matter, this is the Crystal Lounge property, and this is being transferred. The liquor license and the amusement license are being transferred into, into this new owner's name.
Correct, the new name is going to be Avocados.
Okay, and, and it actually has an LLC. It looks like Avocados LLC has, has been set up, so they're being transferred into Avocados LLC's name.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any questions or would like to make a motion? Let's do the, one has to be a roll call vote, and the other one has to be a voice vote. So just understand though that this is not a new license, this is just a, or a new premise. This is just a transfer from one owner to another owner at the same premise. Okay, so anybody want to make a motion?
Move to approve, Martin?
Second, Paul Hagan.
Yeah, we got a motion by Dimitri Martin, second by Paul Hagan, that we approve of license report number 1514. And, and again, I have to preface this only by saying that these have to be approved by, by the police chief yet, the fire chief, the building inspector, and the health inspector. And I don't know how many of those have been done. Sandy, you probably know better than I do.
Well, no, I don't.
Okay, so this is, your motion, your motion does include that in there, that the, you have to get approval from, from those four before the license would actually transfer into Avocados LLC's name.
Yeah, building inspection is on Monday, we've got that lined up with Jane.
Okay, sounds great. All right, any other discussion on license report 1514? Sandy, you'll call her all?
Steve Hackett?
Aye.
Lori Chestnut?
Aye.
Paul Hagan?
Aye.
Alan Keeland?
Aye.
Scott Pachatsky?
Aye.
Dave Peterson?
Aye.
Paul Neal?
Aye.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Mary Fair?
Aye.
And Eric Olson?
Aye.
Ten ayes, motion carried.
All right, just going along with this, this is a transfer of a light arcade amusement device license to Avocados LLC. This is license report 1515. We could do this with a voice vote, but... a voice vote, but we need a motion and a second.
Move.
Second, this is Lori.
Motion by Hackett, I'm assuming, Hackett, second by Chestnut, that we approve of license report 1515. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Anybody that'd like to abstain? Motion carried. This is our regular operator's license. We always seem to have a couple every month. This is license report 1516 for new operators that are getting bartender's license in our city. So we need a motion to approve.
Move to approve license report 1516. Fair.
Second, Martin.
Motion by Mary Fair, second by Dimitri Martin, that we approve license report 1516. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Anybody that'd like to abstain? Motion carried. All right, we're down to communications recommendations of the mayor. Couple of things that I want to make sure that we're aware of. First of all, we do have a committee of the whole meeting that's going to be right after this meeting. So don't hang up and call back. Just stay on the line here. We'll, we'll go directly into that. And then don't forget that our November meeting is on Wednesday, November 3rd?
Fourth.
Okay, Wednesday, November 4th. But again, it's at, it's at 6 o'clock, regular time, but just different day. And then we do have a, and you heard this earlier, but I think maybe it's pretty important, council, and let us know if you want to attend. But it's a virtual meeting, but City Planning Commission is holding their November meeting actually next, next Monday, the 26th. So there will not be a city planning meeting in November, but there, there will be another one in October. And this is, we have other items on the agenda, obviously, but Planning Commission, it looks like they're going to be talking about the zoning code again. So if you want to be a part of that, you know, because ultimately it's your vote, let Sandy or Aaron know, and, and we'll make sure that you get the invite to, to link in with us. Okay, anybody else have anything for the good of the regular meeting?
Motion adjourned.
Uh, second.
That was Pat Fair. He can't do that.
Move to adjourn.
Wow.
Kealan, the second.
Motion by Paul Hagan, second by Alan Kealan, that we adjourn. I didn't recognize the voice, I'm sorry. But, and to adjourn. Any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We are adjourned at 7:55 PM. We can go into the committee of the hall. We're in the top of the third, and it's tied 0:00. Okay, it's, it's 8 o'clock. Speak out if you're not back.
Okay.
All right, we have a committee of the whole meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 20th, 2020. I do call this meeting to order, and we have the same 11 council members and staff members in attendance. So you have an agenda, albeit just a few items on there. We need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I heard Olson to approve.
Second, Lori.
Second by Chestnut to approve the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. Let's go to, first of all, review the long-term disability insurance. And Kathy, I'm, again, I'm assuming this is all you here.
Yep. So, one of the things that has come off the Wisconsin retirement system is that the state has long-term disability insurance available. And it's a different program than we currently have with the principal, which is a private insurance company. And what we're looking at is going with the ETF version of long-term disability. We had the Horton Group provide a comparison. One of the things is, is right now there is a premium holiday. The fund is fully funded under the state, and so they have turned off all of the premiums, both for the employer and the employee. So one of the things would be is that we would automatically save $13,000 in premium costs starting next year. There are differences in the coverage is that instead of only full-time employees or somebody who works 30 more hours a week, we would have anybody who is WRS eligible employees. So we do, would be providing this benefit now to some of our part-time employees that work enough hours that they qualify under Wisconsin retirement. Again, it's an additional benefit. It's 75% of the monthly earnings, up to $4,000. It only covers up to, for the employer to cover, only $64,000 worth of wages. If an employee is making more than $64,000, they would have to opt to pay the premium for supplemental insurance. But at least then, and if you were looking at a $64,000 salaried employee, they would get monthly earnings up to $4,000 per month. There isn't a monthly, a minimum benefit. And we get to select the type of elimination period. Currently, we have 90 days, which is three months that an employee would have to be disabled and unable to perform their duties. We could go down as low as 30 or up to 180 days if we wanted to. But our sick leave banks, that the maximum that the employee can hold is probably at the 90 days is when you really want this benefit to, to take effect. It also allows coverage to age 65 or the social security age that you could, if you are permanently disabled. You can have some own occupation. So if you have some retraining that you able to go into a different, let's say it's one of our police officers, then that we would have some coverage for 12 months, and then 12 months for which they would qualify. There's no pre-existing conditions, except that they can't be disabled as of January 1st. So anybody who's on a pre-existing condition, there wouldn't be any coverage for that person. And there is some total disability that's required during that 90 days. There isn't any partial, so that you can't have half-days or anything like that. To, one of the things that would go away is we do have about 11 employ, full-time employees that have, continue to receive this short-term liability insurance that's left over and stopped for anybody who was hired, I believe it's after 2011. And we have not had anybody use that benefit. We're just looking at that as a savings for the, for the budget. That's pretty much it. Like if that is, it, it's nice because if somebody was to become disabled, this is all in one spot. Their Wisconsin retire, it's Wisconsin retirement. They can go right into the Wisconsin retirement at retirement age. And to me, it's, it's kind of like a one-stop shop for our, our benefits.
Thanks, Kathy. Kathy, if you said this, I'm sorry, but remind me again how many times we've had people that have had to use long-term disability?
We have had, since I've been here five years, I have not had anybody claim the long-term disability. However, there probably were some employees that probably could have used this as recently as one of our police officers who didn't have the coverage. But would, the police officers would get that coverage now. So there, there, there is some, some possibility. But this is, right now, I believe, is a pretty good benefit, especially with the fact that it's, if the employee wants more coverage, they're going to pay for it. But the city's maxed out at coverage up to $64,000.
Okay. Any questions on this?
Kathy, can you explain the pre-existing condition part again? I didn't understand that.
Let's say right now I have somebody who is going through cancer treatments right now this year. And when we switched, they would not, if they became disabled, they would not qualify because it's a pre-existing condition.
Okay. But is everybody, okay.
So it's not that you have a pre-existing condition, that, but that you're off now on to say, that you're off now to be disabled, long-term disability, it wouldn't, it wouldn't cover that. You would still stay under the principal's policy if you were currently disabled.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? All right, then our last item under the committee of the whole meeting, which I think groups a couple of things in there. But Kathy, are you leading this? Or Aaron, do you want to set this up? I, I guess I didn't ask you this earlier.
Um, right now, with the ratification and the passing of the police union's contract, we're looking at a 2% cost of living adjustment for employees. That would be, again, the staff's recommendation that it's something that we could afford under levy limits. And what we have available for revenue projections right now is to renew that, that contract with our other non-represented employees. So we're looking at, at a 2% in the 2021 budget. And if Aaron wants to talk about the other piece of this, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. So in addition to that 2%, we're, we're also looking at setting aside an additional 1% that could be used for a performance slash incentive pay type system that would be tied to performance reviews. Now, I can tell you that we do not have the structure in place. We are far from it. What I would anticipate happening is working with all of our department heads and reviewing this over the first X amount of months of 2021, and coming up with a system that there's a comfort level with, that also we feel is not only good for employee performance and organizational performance, but also good for employee morale. And it, it also, you know, it's, it's not that this is set in stone. We could go through this and, and realize that, hey, that whatever we came up with, we don't feel comfortable with. And maybe it's not used. But I think the intention is to set it aside to eventually use it, and to certainly explore that option in the beginning of 2021. So that's, that's the other piece of this that we're looking to explore.
Okay, and any comments on, on that?
Yeah, this is Alan. I think it's a good idea. The incentive plan I like. I think those are very worthwhile. Many of us on the council have or are still working from the private sector and have some experience with incentive plans. And I, I would hope that you might call on us for some input into the process.
Thank you, Alan. That's, that's a great suggestion.
All right, Alan, you're, you're on another committee. Anybody else?
Brian, 1%, is that 1% of peop, everybody's wages thrown into a pot?
See, Kathy, you want to explain that?
Well, you wouldn't include the police union because they've already settled. We have a contract with them for, for 2%. So it would be the general employees that would be getting the, the lift, if you might say, a one-time incentive bonus that you would, you would see put through. But we haven't really come through with all the rules or talked to any of the departments. This was pretty much Aaron and the mayor and I putting together some costs from the simple fact is we did not have any increases in, in the employee side of the benefits. So we got another 0% increase in our health insurance premium for the third year, which is good. And, you know, our other insurances are all locked in with two or three-year premium locks. So I think we're in a good position.
I would have a question. This is Mary. So will you be seeking, having any consultants or anybody work with you on developing a program like this where we might have to spend some consultant money? Or is this something that you think that we can come up with internally? Because I think it needs to be very, very laid out and very specific, and follow guidelines that are pretty much state-of-the-art or, or, you know, the usual that's done in other companies and such.
So Mary, I can speak to that. I can tell you, we have talked about that exact thing. And, yeah, we are not opposed to using a consultant if we feel like that's needed. I think we want to start the conversations internally first, and then, and then maybe eventually get to that point and maybe plug them in at points in the process instead of having, we'll see how it goes, Mary. I guess it's, we're pretty early on in this. But I, I think your point is well-taken. I think someone who's been through this and has expertise in it, we're, we're not adverse to having someone like that involved.
Well, and, but actually, my point was almost the opposite. It's, I think we have to consider that is yet another expense besides the 1%, even though it's in a kind of a savings account. That would be another expense if, if you felt that, that you needed to go out and seek a consultant, which I know are not, they don't come cheaply. So I, I am, and I would have to be, if I had a vote in this, I would really have to be convinced that incentive program is of value in a, for an employee. But, so I'm not, I'm not right now really in favor of pay for performance. But I could be convinced, you know, it depends on how it's set up, I'm sure.
So thanks for the comments, Mary, because quite honestly, that's been my thoughts. that's been my thoughts for a long time, but I've, I have changed my mind a little bit on this, and, uh, so I think I'm, and, and actually, I'm the one that brought it up, that we have this discussion, and I think we have to start somewhere, so, I mean, putting the one percent aside, uh, to have this discussion, by having a dollar a month there, we're actually gonna have the discussion, you know? Um, we're not gonna do this unless we feel like it's good for the family, basically, for the, for the city employees and, and for, and for the city, for that matter, too, so, uh, yeah, I think we're gonna go through the whole process. I mean, I, you know, if we, to, to just, uh, comment on Aaron's comment, really, I mean, it, you know, if we, if we don't use a, a an outside source this year, it will be because we think we've come up with a, a good way to start it, and then work our way into a better process, but I, I think it's important that we remember that we put into place, uh, an evaluation process about three years ago, and we haven't, we haven't, uh, I mean, I know getting paid every week is incentive enough for people to, to wanna do a good job, but we haven't, we haven't really necessarily given them a good incentive to continue the evaluation of themselves and of their coworkers, and also of their, of the supervisors, uh, doing that, too. And then I, I guess my last comment on this, too, is, is that I, I like the concept of, of the, of the two percent with the one percent, uh, being an incentive, because the two percent carries forward to future years where this one percent is a one-time money amount. Now, I'm not saying that we, I mean, I, I'm, I'm assuming that once we start this, we'll probably put something in the budget each year, but it's not something that, that gets added on to the new dollars every year.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, I, you know, I, I think we're all cognizant of exactly what you said there, and, and we really wanna step real softly on how we do this, because, you know, I, I think we have a good family right now, and we don't wanna goof that up.
Right.
Yeah. Any other comments? I, I think, you know, one of the, the big comments here, too, that, uh, um, you know, in, in the last few years, we've added new staff, uh, whether last year it was a, uh, we added a, a second liaison officer that we paid partly for. We also added, um, a drug officer last year. Aaron, help me out, or were there any other new additions that we added in twenty-twenty?
No, I think you covered them, but I think the only other thing is, just a reminder, there was a position approved through a PAC online that, uh, Josh talked about, that actually didn't go into effect this year, but it was approved last year, uh, that might be coming forward. It was kinda, he was keeping an eye on revenues and such with that fund. Um, so that might be something you see coming forward in the future, too.
Excellent. And so there are no new requests for twenty-twenty-one from any of the departments for additional staff, so another good thing that we can look at. Anything else for the committee of the hall meeting? Any comments? So you'll see the recommendations here. When, when we move the budget forward, you'll see, uh, both of these items, uh, in your, uh, budget for twenty-twenty-one. All right, uh, I guess we'll, motion by Hagan.
Second, Keeland.
Second, second by Keeland, that we adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Against? Motion carried. We're adjourned at eight-twenty-one PM. Thanks, everybody.